Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Hopper?
Here.
Mr. Retoth? Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Dr. Sortino?
Here.
Mr. Seltzer?
Here.
Mr. Todd?
Okay, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for a closed session September 12th, 2018 at Parkway Central Middle School, following the regular meeting for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district in any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1; number two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded, 610.021.3; number three, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals, including records of individual test or examination scores, 610.021.6; number four, individual identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.1.3.
So moved.
Second.
Will call.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Sortino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Now would those of you in the audience please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some special recognitions this evening. I'd like to welcome Julie Hederman, the American Heart Association, the Midwest affiliate, to join us. Julie will recognize three Parkway schools for their fundraising contributions to the American Heart Association.
Great, thank you so much. Is this? There we go.
Run a little bit around.
Your honor. Thank you so much to the board and Dr. Marty for welcoming me, and I have worked with the Parkway schools. This is starting up my 12th year as the Senior Youth Market Director, and I've had the pleasure of working with Eddie Madison the past couple of years. And then you're also really fortunate, as you well know, to have Leah Gonzalez with your staff wellness. And I really like to brag on you all because Parkway not only says that you have a wellness policy and wellness program, both student and staff, but you really put that into action. So thank you so much, because the American Heart Association really values that. And I work with a lot of school districts that continue to ask me what works at other school districts, and you all are doing the right thing, so thank you for that. This year is a special year. This will be the 40th anniversary of the American Heart Association working with schools. And some of you are probably familiar with Jump Rope for Heart, and some of you even did that probably in grade school. It's been around now for 40 years. So we are looking at, we've refreshed the name, we've refreshed the program, we've added some new components. We're really including the whole child, the whole school, the whole community, and we really need to positively impact the health, not just of your students, but your families also. So we need to get those health messages to those families. We've learned a lot in 40 years, and so we've seen a lot of changes. Unfortunately, the health habits of a lot of families have actually gotten worse instead of better, so it's really important that these get, these students get their health messages early on through teachable moments. We also are changing the name of the program, because we continue to hear "jump rope," like, does anyone still jump rope? Well, it's now called Kids' Heart Challenge. It's way more encompassing of all physical activities. The students and the teachers, the PE teachers, can really help determine what really motivates the kids. We have a warrior, like a ninja warrior challenge, some resources for that. We also have some dance components, along with the traditional basketball and hoops, basketball and jump rope skills. So we do want to those students to take ownership, not just of their learning health habits earlier, but learning to do good deeds, being caught with good character habits, and also giving back through the service learning program. Unfortunately, heart disease, every year I come, I think maybe I'll get to say that heart disease is not the number one cause of death, but it still is. And we are the Heart and Stroke Association, so that is the number one cause of death, heart attacks, and stroke is the number five cause of death. In fact, every 40 seconds, someone experienced some type of cardiac arrest. But, the good news is that there are way more heart and stroke survivors than there ever have been. My grandmother died of a stroke back in the 70s. She had it, she never spoke again, and it was a serious impairment for the rest of her life. I just met with one of my PE teachers the other day, and her husband unfortunately experienced a stroke last May, and he's recovering very beautifully. So I really share those impacts with the students, and they need to know what kind of differences that they're making. You all have been champions again for health and wellness for many years. I'm betting for 40 years, but I don't know who all has been here in the past 40 years. But I would be willing...
We have somebody.
I mean, excuse me, Dr. Schindler.
No, I'm okay.
We've worked at so many schools together.
No, no problem.
Such a pleasure. And the donations that the students raise, and they really put so much effort into it. I see the little baggies of change that they bring in, and they really take this to heart, literally. And so those donations, just so you know, stay in the St. Louis area. We have a lot of great research facilities here in St. Louis. Last year, and I think I sent a form to Nikki, I don't know if that was able to be printed or not, this one?
I put it on board.
Okay. This is a list of all your Parkway schools and what they raised, and last year, drum roll, the schools collected over $125,330. So that is amazing. You all deserve a huge round of applause. That is amazing. And that, just so I know, lots of people have a little competition, that Parkway is the fourth highest district in the state of Missouri, so it is just incredible what you all have continued to do and raise more each year. So that is very, very valued. And something else to call attention to on this sheet, really a benefit of doing the programs, and we try and let the parents know about this, the schools earn a portion of PE equipment back to the schools to support those programs. So over $8,000 in PE equipment was given back to the Parkway schools last year also. I really cannot say enough about your outstanding PE and health teachers and your nurses. I have the pleasure of working with them throughout the year, and I've worked with many of them, like I said, 12 years. I consider them friends, and they are huge champions for our cause. They know they're giving back to the community, and they teach that to the students. So this will be a lifelong passion of learning these heart-healthy habits at an early age. Last year, in 2018, there were six Parkway schools alone that collected over $10,000. So when you see these folks out in your community, and if any of the principals are here, I don't think the PE teachers are here, there's a lot of coaches and family obligations, but McKelvey Elementary, Ally Gardner and Jessica Wheeler, the PE teachers, collected almost $13,000 last year from McKelvey students. Oak Brook Elementary, Ron Ramspot and Leanna Corderville, collected over $12,000. Mason Ridge, Bill Bunton and Brandon McDaniel, over $12,000. Hannah Woods, Erin Francis, Nick Tenurches, over $10,000. Ross Elementary, Amy Sidner and Kyle King, over $10,000. And Belle Reeve Elementary, John Fink and Mike Button, over $10,000. So you all have some amazing champions. Please tell them thank you in all of the passing bys when you're in and out of these schools. And I just wanted to share, finally, that while we're talking to these students, we want them to connect, again, the heart-healthy habits, like getting 60 minutes of exercise every day, drinking water, like Eddie's little buddy over here, his son asked for water. That's amazing. My kids always asked for soda back in the day. So we want these health messages to start early and continue on for the rest of their life, including saying no to tobacco. And I always have the pleasure to come and talk to your high school heroes in January, and those ambassadors, again, I don't know another district that I work with that has a program like your high school heroes, and those peer counselors that go back and talk to the middle schoolers, we always stress that all the tobacco, the vaping is absolutely not acceptable. I think they thought that's a better alternative to nicotine, it's not. So these kids are learning these heart-healthy messages, and I really wanted to conclude with a thank you from myself, but also, this year, one of our little smallest heart heroes, that's kind of the theme for this year, is a little boy named Finn. And when his mom Kelly was pregnant with him, they discovered, of course, through just a standard ultrasound, that he had multiple heart issues. And so the good news was that they could determine that in utero and start to make those kind of surgery plans once he was born. And so they named him Finley, because that means warrior. And Finley now has had over 14 surgeries on this little guy, and he is doing great. I got to meet him at a meeting. He is quite, he is living large. If you want to follow his story, they have a very active Facebook and Instagram called Prayers for Finn, and they are an amazing family that are so appreciative of everything that you all do. So when I met them, again, I said I would pass along their thanks to all of you, and I thank the kids when I meet with them at their schools. So thank you very, very much for everything that you all do, and if I can be of any help with resources, or questions, or assistance, please don't hesitate to call me. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We'll make sure that the schools that Julie mentioned get a lot of recognition through our communications office, and Eddie works real closely with Julie and other folks, Leah Gonzalez. Julie, you've been such a pleasure, our such a pleasure to work, I don't want to make it sound like it's over, you are such a pleasure to work with, and your enthusiasm and your support for the district is really so much appreciated. And I know I speak for, so many people have a chance to work with you. I know Sam has worked with you for quite a long time.
Even last year, we had a great time. Great time last year, yeah.
So thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. 6.0 additions, corrections, and modifications to agenda. 6.01 addendum to agenda item 10.07, approval of personnel items. 6.02 addition of agenda items 10.29, approval of corporate partnership. TJ's pizza. 6.03 modification to agenda item 10.13, approval of board policy igdf.bp, school-sponsored fundraiser. 7.0, citizen statements. Tonight, we have three people who have signed up. I believe the first two are sharing some time together, so I could go ahead and call the first two, Bruce Major and Charlotte DiOfranto. And normally, I think we allow a minute and a half, but we'll do two minutes each tonight.
Thank you, thank you. President Todd, Vice President Sortino, members of the board, Dr. Marty, we're back. Citizens for the Parkway Community, the advocacy group for Prop S, the bond issue that the board approved back in August, and we are very excited tonight to be able to introduce a few friends we brought along. These are your volunteers working on the campaign. We have the school leaders, area coordinators, and quite a few building administrators here tonight, so that's who's standing behind us. Don't be shy, y'all. Come on down to this step.
There's a lot of households in Parkway, and it takes a lot of work, and we wanted to just make sure that the people who are heading this up are really these people, and we wanted just to have a chance for you guys to see them and to acknowledge how fabulous and how lucky Parkway is to have this many volunteers that have already started working and will be continuing working so hard in the next two months, so that we can pass this bond and do the best for Parkway students. So I'm going to give them a round of applause if anybody wants to join in with me. And I think that's our final two minutes.
Well, just in closing, I would mention that be sure to check your mail tonight. There's an article in the West News Magazine about Proposition S and the beginnings of our campaign in that regard, so I invite everybody to check that out. And we're absolutely 56 and awake up, no pressure.
We're going to go back to our meeting and let you guys continue your meeting.
We'd like to thank all of you for your service. I know Jeff probably wants to say that in behalf of the board, but in behalf of the school district and administration, thank you, and thank you, Bruce, Charlotte, for stepping up and taking leadership, and all of you taking on responsibility. You know, tomorrow night, we're going to celebrate with partners in the Parkway School District who support us in so many ways, with a tailgate party at the West High School. And you are welcome, I think we'll have enough food, right? But you are real partners as well, so thank all of you sincerely, and we know the next couple of months are going to be very, very busy, but we really appreciate the support. Again, thank the two of you for your leadership.
All right.
Absolutely. The board appreciates all of your time and work on this effort, and of course, you will receive an official response from the board for speaking here tonight.
We would expect nothing less.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I begin?
You may.
All right. Good evening, board members. My name is Assad Siddiqui, and I'm a junior at Parkway Health High. Over 1,000 marine lives are killed every year. Over 1 million seabirds die every year. Over 500 million are used daily, enough to circulate the Earth 2.5 times every single day. All of these statistics happens because of one little thing, plastic straws. I asked the Parkway Board to order the ban of plastic straws in all Parkway cafeterias and kitchens. Why you must ask? The chemicals benzene and vinyl used to make plastic hurt air pollution in the air tremendously. Also, another chemical pathologies is a chemical that makes plastic soft, and this is not chemically bonded, thus it evaporates in the air and mixes into what we breathe in, and is extremely toxic. Plastic straws are adding directly to the issue of air pollution. As stated before, the marine life has taken the biggest punch with plastic straws. They get stuck in their mouth, noses, noses, and eyes. They get mistaken for food. All of this is something that is thrown away after 10 minutes of use. As Parkway taking the steps into the abolishment of ordering plastic straws, this will have priceless benefits, such as less chemicals released in the air, marine life will be better off. This will teach Parkway kids to live without the necessity of plastic straws and develop a habit within them. Parkway can save money, because they no longer have to order straws, and this money can be used to fund programs to better students' education. Surely, if Starbucks can abolish plastic straws, then surely Parkway can follow. Parkway can start a domino effect of other districts also abolishing plastic straws. As I end my proposal to the Parkway School Board, I would like you to consider the earth we all live on, and join the fight to support our future generation in marine life. It's the 21st century, and we are facing the issue of plastic on Earth. Will you be the solution, or will you add to the problem?
Thank you very much. You'll receive a response from the board.
All right, thank you.
Okay, 8.0, approval of agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for September 12th, 2018. All in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries six to zero. 9.01, calendar of meetings. Am I reading that, Nikki? Parkway's annual tax rate hearing will take place on Wednesday, September 26th, 2018, at 6:30 PM. The regular board meeting will follow the hearing beginning at 7:00 PM. Both meetings will take place here at Central Middle School, and anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 PM. 9.02, board liaison reports. Start down there with Kevin.
Thank you very much. So this was an exciting month for me as a board member, being it's the first month of the new school year that begins with me on the board, and it's very, very exciting. And I was able to attend several great events. First off, on the first day of school, I was lucky enough to tour three schools with Dr. Marty and Jeff Todd. We went to Parkway North, Parkway Northeast Middle, and Craig School, and at North and Northeast, we were able to see some of the great additions of those schools, and all three, we were able to really soak in the enthusiasm from the teachers, the administrators, and the students, and it was a really great beginning of the school year for our district, and personally, for me to be involved in that. Couple weeks later, was able to attend a West football game with my three-year-old daughter, although we didn't make it out of the first quarter. It was a good experience, and she had plenty to eat. Just last week, Judge Sonia Sotomayor attended Craig Elementary School, which was extraordinarily exciting for me as a board member, an attorney, and a parent of a Craig Elementary School student. Judge Sotomayor selected Craig because of the very diverse, the very diverse population of the students there, and she had two sessions, one with the fourth and fifth graders, and one with the second and third graders. I think the gravitas of a Supreme Court Justice being at the elementary school was kind of lost on some of the younger kids, who focused a great deal more on her discussion of diabetes and insulin shots than on her role as a Supreme Court Judge. But I think it was a really successful day. I think the building administrators did a terrific job of taking on the responsibility of having some of that stature in the building, and keeping, still keeping an elementary school running smoothly. I was also lucky enough that day to ride the school bus home with my son, which was a first for me in many, many years, and it was fun to have that experience, and have a six-year-old kindergartner tell me to sit down in my seat was certainly would be my place. And finally, I was able to attend last week, a Craig School PTO meeting, semi in my official capacity, but mostly in support of my wife Erin, who is the president of the Craig School PTO, and it was great to see the enthusiasm of so many parents being involved at the beginning of the school year to support the teachers and the students of that building.
I also attended the Sonia Sotomayor visit, which was great, and for those of you not there, one of the things she said when we had the chance to meet her was, "Your kids are just so happy." Like, "All the kids here just seem so happy, this is such a happy place." So I thought, you know, of all the things she could have said to us, that's what she chose to say, so I think that was kind of a proud moment. I also did two welcome backs, one with the social workers and counselors, a big group. We could sure use it to be bigger, couldn't we? But obviously, a group that's working hard to meet all the social, emotional needs of our kids, and they were really just excited to start the year, so it was good to be at their welcome back. And then last week, I went to the first meeting of DIA, which is Diversity in Action, and that's a committee of representatives from each school who focus on closing the achievement gap across the district. So they were just launching their work for the year, having their first meeting, kind of looking at the data for their schools, and then breaking out to begin meeting to create action plans for their schools and grade levels for what they wanted to take on this year, in terms of working on that issue. So those are just a couple of things I've done the last couple of weeks.
On Friday, I had the opportunity to attend a suicide prevention summit that was presented by the St. Louis Prevention Coalition. We did have representation of our school district there as well, from our counseling area. Erin Schulte attended as well, and so it was, the takeaway message there is that it's a huge issue that we still need to continue to work on and be aware of, and that we would like for the district to still, you know, keep moving forward with addressing mental health issues that we have amongst our entire community. Nobody is immune to this particular problem, and they're, fortunately, in St. Louis, we're very privileged to have lots of resources. We just need to find a way to organize it and consolidate it in a forum where people can access that at any time, immediately, that they need to get some help. So we're thankful that this district is still have its eye on that particular issue. And then I'm also continuing to work with our governing council for the special school district. We have our first meeting this coming Monday.
I'll just share one quick story. My oldest is a junior in Parkway, and going to curriculum night, I was highly encouraged by the fact that through multiple subjects, the focus on life beyond high school, and skills that they need both for living their lives, for growing, for employment, and for college. It was really heartening, over all the different topics and subjects, the focus on the future. And it is kind of scary for Dad, that would be going to our first college fair on Monday night, but my daughter's doing great, and I'm glad to see that in the school, and the focus beyond, and preparing them not just for college, but for life in general, having those skills in place.
I had the privilege of attending the welcome back for the Transportation Department, and as I was telling Will the other day, it's amazing when you see the drivers on the road, you see one or two or three here and there, when you see them all together filling the cafeteria at West High, it's amazing how many drivers we actually do have. Also had the privilege of welcoming back our wonderful nurses to the new school year. That's always a pleasure. And Dr. Marty and I visited West High together, and Shenandoah, and also Green Trails. And I have to tell you the story about Shenandoah. We were visiting classrooms, and we decided that we were about ready to leave, so we looked over and said, "Well, maybe we'll go into that classroom." So, okay, let's do. I walk in the classroom, and one of my former students, a kindergarten student from Andrews last year, saw me and got up and ran to me, and I threw her up in the air, and had such a wonderful reunion, and it was probably one of the most special things I've ever experienced with a child. I mean, it was just amazing. And it seemed like it was meant to be happening, because we weren't going to go in that classroom. The other thing, we, Jeff and I, attended the Project Parkway, and basically, this is my ninth year, and I think this is Jeff's second year, on Project Parkway Steering Committee. It's been a delight to be part of that over the years, and it's just amazing, the accomplishments of Project Parkway. Basically, you know, its purpose is to accomplish mission, we all know that, but also to provide strategic direction, and also to achieve goals. And basically, we have three major areas of goals, one dealing with students, the other staff, and resources. It's just amazing what's been accomplished over a period of time. So we did get a report from at least two of the areas. We didn't have time for one, but, you know, if you haven't thought about it recently, or you'd like to understand exactly what it accomplishes, what everyone accomplishes, because it's holistic, everyone's involved in accomplishing these major goals, and it's rather significant, and it's a pleasure to be part of it. Dr. Watson, we thank you for facilitating once again, and I've said this before, over the years, we've had, I don't know how many facilitators, but they've all been absolutely incredible, and you're among the very best as well, so thank you very much for all you've done, our doing at the same time.
Thank you. And this is my second year as a board member on the Steering Committee. I've been on for a few years.
Oh, that's right, I missed you.
Sorry. But I wasn't going to say anything about Sonia Sotomayor, because I figured, somebody would have said it already, but two of the things that my biggest takeaways from that event were how much she, I sat there and I thought, this could be anyone's grandmother reading to these kids. She was just, she was just a normal person reading a book to kids, and it was so neat to see that. And the other cool thing that stuck with me that I've told a number of people about is that she told the older group of kids that she talked to, that if any of them decided to go into law, and if any of them decided to become a judge, that no matter where she was in life, she would come back for their swearing-in ceremony. And that was a pretty big, that was a pretty big thing that she threw out there, so that was neat. In addition to Sam and Dr. Marty, Dr. Marty and I spent the first day and a half or so of school, visiting, I don't know how many dozen or 15 schools we visited, and it was great to see all the excitement of the kids' first day at school, and first couple of days of teachers getting settled. And of course, I got home that first night, and I said to my wife, you know, "It was great, and it was fun seeing all this," but I couldn't help but think, these administrators are probably thinking to me, thinking to themselves, "Why is the superintendent and the board president here? This is the last thing we probably want." Anyway, but it was good, we were very well received, so. In addition to the school tours, I was fortunate to be part of the Mason Ridge 70th birthday celebration a few weeks ago. That was great, there was a couple of old administrators had come back, and some teachers, There was a couple of old administrators had come back, and some teachers, and of course, lots of current folks. And then Matt and Kristi and I kicked off something called Board Chat a few weeks ago. And that was an event that we, that Matt kind of said, "Let's do this." And so, it was an opportunity to be open as a board with the community and provide an opportunity outside of this type of setting, to where citizens, whether they're parents or just general citizens in the community, could come and ask us questions and hear what's going on in the district. We didn't have a huge group that showed up, but enough that we felt it was worthwhile. And we got some good feedback in the community for trying to be open. And so, we'll do that again, probably one more time this fall, and maybe another time or two in the spring. And it'll be different board members each time, I think. And so, keep an eye out for that. And then, I also participated in a couple of welcome backs. One of the ones that was memorable to me the most was the Oasis Tutors. We had 25 new Oasis tutors that went through a couple of day training and prepared them to be readers, tutors to our youngest kids. There are so many of them across the St. Louis area that get in our schools and read to students, and they create a great bond with some of these early students. And we really appreciate their help and their support in the community. So, that's about it.
Well, I just, I'm impressed of all of you. I think I always liked this section, because I think it illustrates to so many the board's commitment to be involved, not just at these meetings. So, thank you so much for all of your various activities and getting the school year started. It's been a great start. And a lot of it has to do with the fact that you're willing and supportive. I think, actually, I think our principals like us there, because I think it demonstrates that we're there to support them and hear good comments. Always hear great comments when board members are in school, so thank you so much. I will just say that I had the pleasure of hosting the county superintendents at North High School last week for our first meeting of the year. Dr. Ziegler was one of the people there. We had a great turnout, and it was such a pleasure. Tori Kane was so gracious, and we had Brian Reeves in the choir participate with some wonderful numbers. And so, I think Paul would agree, it was a great, it was a great first opportunity for us to get together as superintendents. And my colleagues, I think, really enjoyed being here in Parkway. But again, thank all of you board members, and thanks for all those stories.
Okay, upcoming subcommittees, board subcommittee meetings will resume in the next few weeks. Let's see, 10 dot zero, consent items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the September 12, 2018 board materials?
Still moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled, actioned, or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. 11 point zero, action items, there are none. 12 point zero, policy review. We have a review of board policy DJFA dot BP, the federal programs and projects. Patty will join us if there are any questions. Anyone have any questions for Patty? I don't think so. You're off the hook. Thank you. Okay, this policy will be up for approval at the next board meeting. Moving on, 13 point zero, we have a couple of reports. 13 point zero one, Education Plus overview. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Paul Ziegler, Executive Director of Education Plus, to join us here.
Thank you all for your, some time this evening on your agenda. My name's Paul Ziegler. I'm Executive Director at Education Plus. I'm actually starting my second year there, and wanted to come kind of share with you where we're at at Education Plus, a little bit about how you use us, and then a few things at the end that are a little bit special about this year. So, who are we at Education Plus? Who do we serve? We're 53 school districts in the metropolitan area. That represents over 500 schools, over 29,000 educators, and over almost 300,000 students. We do three things, really. We have our business services, we have our learning platform, and then our network and advocacy slash communication platform. When we look at that, cooperative purchasing is a big part of what we do in our purchase services. So, what we try to do is take the purchasing power of those 53 school districts and leverage that to get the best prices possible for our schools. We do that in a lot of different ways. We do that through a national bid, it's called the AEP. We work with 27 other states to go out and bid, tend to be larger ticket items with national vendors. And then, we actually execute those contracts locally after that bidding process is worked through with that national consortium. We also do it locally. So, sometimes we have some local companies that we utilize, such as a furniture manufacturer. A lot of times, they tend to be local in nature. We'll go out and bid, a catalog bid with them for a discount on that, so that our school districts can use that and not have to go through that RFP and bidding process every time they want to buy a chair or other things, and can essentially buy that over the counter. In doing that, we saved last year over $50 million for our schools in just straight discounts off the catalog prices in those two areas. Another thing we do through our business services is we have a PE card. That's a purchase card where we're able to use essentially a MasterCard that school districts use to pay their bills or use to do other expenses. And then, we, and then we pool that spend of all those districts to maximize the rebate. So, last year, even our smallest districts were able to get 120 basis points, or about 1.2% back on a rebate. For us, that accounted to almost $400,000 that we were able to put back in school district coffers. Not all of our districts participate, Parkway happens too. Your rebate last year was over $25,000 in using the PE card. And really, I mean, is it free money? No, you're spending money, but it is, in the sense, money that you're receiving back that you wouldn't otherwise if you didn't use that program. Another thing we do is MoReap. We own a system that is kind of that clearinghouse for jobs in the area and also the state. So, a lot of times, from a school nurse to an assistant superintendent, those jobs get posted in that MoReap. And that's kind of the go-to for people in Missouri to know what education jobs are out there. We also use that, and we actually sell it to some other states, New Mexico, Connecticut, some other people that use that same platform to post their jobs. So, again, that's a little bit of a moneymaker for us as well. In our learning division, last year, we had over seven, about 7,300 people attend conferences, workshops, or other things. We do that through 152 professional development events. So, when you think about that, that's almost one per school day when you think about 180 school days. And that's even trying to avoid Mondays and Fridays, because we know they're tough days to get sub sometimes. We do that, we do 86 custom, we also did 86 customized learning events. That's where a school district approaches us about a specific thing that they want to implement within their school. And then, we either provide that through our kind of cadre of professionals we have that work with us, or bring in somebody else to help them and do that customized for either a school building or a district. Then, we have four major conferences, METC, which is our Midwest Education Technology Community. And that's a, that's a big piece of what we do. Also, Character in Action. You guys are very familiar with our Character Plus. And then, our Support Staff Academy, and Align St. Louis. So, we do that, and we use four channels to do that. We have our own Education Plus, or EdPlus Learning. That fits that customized. Also, when we bring in national thought leaders that we bring in for all our school districts, we run that through kind of what we consider our EdPlus arm of learning. Character Plus, again, you guys are very familiar with that, but it really has four main channels that it looks at now. The restorative practices, social and emotional learning, trial and form, and then the character education. Our St. Louis RPDC, we are the only non-university RPDC in the state. And RPDC is the Regional Professional Development Center. That's sponsored by our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There's nine of those in the state. We're the only one that's not attached to a university, and we're actually the largest. So, again, that's something that we take great pride in. We really feel like we can meet the needs of our St. Louis community. And oftentimes, we have people travel from the other regions to see what we're putting on here. And then, lastly, we talked about METC. Everybody typically thinks of that as our big Midwest Education Technology Conference. Typically, we have over 2,000 people that come to that conference, but it's also a community. And in that community, we try to create professional development throughout the year. We try to create opportunities for people to network, and we also do advocacy both at the state and the national level. And then, ISTI. We just recently, this summer, found out that we are one of four affiliates in the nation that often, they can offer ISTI certification. And ISTI is the International Standards for Technology Education, and we are, again, only one of four nationwide that can offer that. And we actually did the first training this summer of any of the affiliates, and we actually had people from four countries coming here to St. Louis to receive the training that we could offer. And we actually had the first two certified folks that they're both at Education Plus employees. Networking, collaboration, communication. We have 30-plus groups that meet at Education Plus during the end of the year. Some meet monthly, some meet quarterly, some meet on a less routine basis. But again, they use us as that hub. Oftentimes, we work with their listserv to make sure people are aware where those meetings are, set up that space, and make sure that all those things go smoothly. We also provided that structure through summits and other special events. Last year, obviously, after the tragedy in Parkland, we had some things that we needed to address as a region, and make sure that we were all doing the best work we could for kids. So, we quickly were able to mobilize and bring in all the police chiefs from various surrounding areas, as well as our superintendents, to sit and talk, what is our best work there. Also had a summit then to talk about, "How do we get our students' voice?" And we're able to bring in various professionals from all the school districts, to make sure we had kind of a regional approach, while that was specific to each individual school and our communities. We wanted to make sure that as a region, we had a concerted effort on how we were going to do that. And then, we also provide communications, graphic design, and video support. Tends to be for some of our smaller districts, but we do that across the board for anybody that needs that. Advocacy. One of the things we have is a legislative platform. Typically, we align fairly closely with like Missouri School Boards Association platform, or even Missouri Association of School Administrators. But sometimes, there's things in our region that are slightly different, or that need a special attention, or what we consider a St. Louis region issue. The transfer situation years ago is a prime example. So, sometimes, our platform is slightly different, but again, we try to adopt that as a region. We did a bus trip to the Capitol for the first time last year. We took superintendents from the region, we're able to network on the way up, spent some time with our legislators that day, and then we're able to network on the way back. We also participate in, add district advocacy events. I typically attend the Parkway Lunch when that comes around, and work with the advocacy with our legislators here in the area, and also do that in places, Westergroves, Maplewood Ridge Heights, Red Herd, Pattonville's with you all. So, again, I try to participate in those. During the session, I typically go to Jeff City once a week on Tuesday, just to make sure that we're, have our K-12 voice heard. So, I try to meet with our local legislators from Jefferson, St. Louis, St. Charles, and Franklin County, to make sure they know what we need and what the region, how we can be better. And then, we do organize some local and federal advocacy on certain issues. So, for the Parkway schools, how did you all use this last year? Right now, we had 12 schools working with RPDC and a collaborative works grant that will close this year, will move to the Missouri Model District. We have eight principals participating in our MLDS. That's Missouri Leadership Development Series or System. Again, we have the largest cohort in the St. Louis area, and we have a wonderful opportunity for our building leaders to gain some knowledge. We also have four principals that serve as mentors. Dr. Beckman is in charge of SLACA this year, which is the St. Louis Area Curriculum Association. He's a co-facilitator there, along with Wade Steinhoff from Orchard Farm. You were 2017 Missouri District of Character. Again, a point of pride from that Character Ed. 2018, you had schools of character, Parkway Early Childhood Center, as well as Parkway Central Middle. And then, where we're standing, I guess, I should have gone to that. And then, Bill Bass, who you are probably all familiar with. I talked a little bit about ISTI and our relationship with them. We're so proud to say that Bill Bass, one of our own from St. Louis, one of your own here from Parkway, is president of that ISTI this year. And for us, that's a wonderful resource, not only because we're so much a part of what they do, but to have somebody represent the region so well and be able to champion us is outstanding. So, lastly, anybody that's been around for a while knows we had some, a little bit of some financial issues at Education Plus over the years. More recently, we were doing some deficit spending. I'm proud to say that that changed over this last year. We actually moved from a deficit the year before I got there. This past year, we were able to put some surplus earnings back in to try to build back up some of those reserves we had. We had about $400,000 in surplus earnings last year, so that was a swing of about $600,000. That was from the hard work of our districts, of our people in EdPlus, right sizing some of our, what we needed as a staff, and really making good choices about how we're going to spend those dollars. Because I really look at it as we're a service organization, and we need to, I was a former superintendent, I want to take care of the money at Education Plus, just like I would at my school district, and that's to be very thoughtful about how we spend those dollars. And then, lastly, you'll see I brought a picture up here. We're celebrating 90 years this year. It's hard for me to believe that an organization like that at Education Plus, formerly cooperating school district, has been around 90 years from we have. Started in 1928, and now we have 90 years. So, I've giffed for Parkway, and I'm trying to make it to all 53 school district board meetings this year. Might be more than I can. I thought I was done with school board meetings, but what this brings to me is, and it was actually a school board member from Northwest, who was a former art teacher, Sherry Talbot, so you may or may not know her. She illustrates for children's books, but it's a, it's a representation of the 53 schools that make up our region, has some points of interest to St. Louis, and it's really, to me, is really to now celebrate the history of Education Plus and CSD, but it's also to show the strength of our region. Because unlike any other place in the state, when you look, as Dr. Marty mentioned before, that superintendent group, that colleague, that network that we have with our curriculum folks, with our business officials, is unlike any other place in the state. We know that we have people that we can depend on in those groups. So, this, I hope that you guys will find a place for this to celebrate those 90 years. Parkway's certainly been a part of that, that, you know, since our inception, and we actually partner with Craig Elementary on some things, that they share a parking lot with us. So, again, we really feel like you're, you know, probably a big part of our family where we're at. So, hopefully, you can find a place for that, and I'll take any questions. And I know Dr. Marty has a few other things I brought to share with you at some point as well.
I don't think we have any questions, other than, how do you do it? How do you, how are you going to get to all 53?
You know, it's, I don't know, you know, the weird thing of it, when you look, you start to really realize, those boards meet on about the same night. So, you know, it's kind of, it's interesting. I'm finding some where, some start at 6:00, and some start at 7:00. And if I'm smart, I can do a 6 o'clock and a 7:00. I was telling somebody before, next Tuesday, I'm going to the state board meeting. And we do have some out in some of the kind of far-out regions like Lincoln County. So, actually, on the way home from the state board meeting, I'm going to hit Troy, which is Lincoln County on 3, swim by there. They actually start at 5:00 with the dinner with the board, their principals are going to have me present to that group. And then, I'm going to leave there and make it to Orchard Farm in time for their meeting too. So, it's one of those things, to me, celebrating 90 years is important. I think the hard work of the people at Education Plus needs to be celebrated, because I'll tell you, it kind of had a little bit of a black eye, and I think we need to celebrate that we've turned a corner, through the hard work of a lot of people to kind of make it a better region again.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for continuing the relationship that we have with you, and best of luck, and congratulations on turning that corner.
It was hard work by a lot of people.
I know.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, could I just, I just want to say, Paul took over as, you know, had been superintendent in Northwest, of course, does he replace Paul in Northwest. But Paul's, I think, I just.
He's the Northwest head.
Yeah. But, no, I just want to say, I think Paul's, Paul has done a great job. He's right, I think there was some things that had to be straightened out. Paul's come in, I think he's provided wonderful leadership. And then, just some of the things that I think has really been very important for us as a region, to really advocate for the schools here. And Paul's really worked really exceptionally well with districts, but also with legislators and our MASTA group, our superintendents group. You'll see Paul at all, all level, leveled meetings in the region, but also in the state. So, I just want to say, he's done a wonderful job, he's a wonderful partner, and I think has really been responsive to the needs of the region. I always like to think that when I first came, there seemed to be not a lot of cohesiveness that I would have seen where I came from, but I think that's changed a lot. A lot of that had to do with, I think, some of the issues around accreditation, but I think it's just continued, and it's great to see the colleagues, my colleagues in the districts working really closely together. And I think EdPlus is a real hub for us. I mean, there's a lot of activity there, as Paul said, for us to meet and collaborate. And I'm really proud to Kevin and Bill, and I think Mike Berlack, Michael Berlack's done a lot of work there. I think we have a number of people that are, spend a lot of time at EdPlus, participating in the work there. So, Paul, thanks so much for.
You guys are great partners, for sure.
Appreciate it.
And I still do talk to Dr. Marty, despite the fact he took Patty Bedborough with me. So, I'll just, I'll just say, it was, it was a stake to the heart of it.
Paul, Paul tried to hide her for a lot of years. Paul tried to hide her for a lot of years. I'll never forget when I called, he said, you know, I knew somebody was going to find her eventually.
I'd like to say she's the best get to see. But thank you so much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Speaking of Patty Bedborough, we'll have Patty join us to give us a facilities update.
Well, I am simply going to introduce the gentleman that will be presenting the facilities update. But first of all, certainly, if Mike and Eric would come down here, they do have a great slideshow that they'll present to you and tell you their story. But one of the things that I'm very, very proud of, of both of their work this year, is especially their collaboration. Eric has one sustainability tech, and Mike has a lot of maintenance men. I tossed out an idea, what, in the spring, maybe, in the winter, hey, couldn't we get a lot more of these interior LED lights done if we teamed up maybe with facilities? So, they truly became a team, and we were able to get three schools, their interior lighting completed this summer. So, and that's usually the work that Nick does over, what, almost like eight months sometimes to get through a school. So, with that, I will let these gentlemen tell you the rest of their story, but it's been tremendous work. They've had a lot of projects and a lot of small projects. So, sometimes, those are harder to manage than those great big projects. So, you got to see on your tour today, North High, and some of the additions and completions that have been done there, especially with the cafeteria and such. And then, you got to see one of the buildings with the science labs. So, that's just one part of the work that they did. So, we have tonight our Director of Facilities, Mike Martins, and our Director of Sustainability and Purchasing, Eric Leaders. Mike became another grandpa this summer, and Eric became a dad for the first time this summer. So, they have a lot of exciting personal things that happened all in the same time, too.
Good evening. Eric and I are going to tag team this, this evening. And I'd like to say that I agree with Patty, that we do work all together as a team, and we're trying to take the sustainability issues that are coming our way seriously and trying to incorporate that into everything we do. So, it's a pleasure up here to work with Eric on this, on this presentation. I'm going to handle the bond issue project, so I'm going to start with those. We did about $15.5 million worth of work this summer. Of that 3.9 was safety and security, basically our PAs and our fire alarms. I'm not going to steal Eric's thunder here on the sustainability, if you want to go ahead and.
Yeah, so, one thing I would have kind of touched on, too, and just with the collaboration that we've been able to have across multiple departments, and this includes with, in working with Nutrition Services and how they can potentially operate a little bit more sustainably-minded, trying to keep in mind ideas such as getting, eliminating straws, or taking that into consideration, composting, et cetera. So, working with various departments, but working with facilities has been truly collaboration and being able to identify, not necessarily, not only what projects we're doing, but how we're doing standard projects, and how we go about them to make sure that we're putting in the most energy-efficient equipment as possible for that equipment type that we're replacing. So, with that example being high-efficiency HVAC units, so that, those are just standard units to replace, but we're making sure that it follows the advanced energy design guidelines for K-12 schools, to make sure that it is the appropriate level of efficiency, more than appropriate level of efficiency for our buildings, to ensure that we're using as little energy as possible, which therefore extends our taxpayer dollars that much more, as well as upgrading legacy automation controls, touch that later, as well as efficient restroom upgrades. So, making sure that we're not only saving energy, but water, and in places, also reducing waste associated with roll towels, and as well as LED lighting upgrades.
And one of the things that everybody wants to know is, can I get my carpet replaced? Even the really good orange stuff that I think is all gone now. But we spent approximately half a million dollars on flooring replacements, and that's 55,500 square foot of flooring that we did across the district. Our key focus areas for 2018 were finishing up the North High renovations, which we were able to visit for the meeting today. Middle school science renovations, which we were also able to visit over Northeast Middle. We did renovations in nine schools and support buildings over the summer. And two of our best kept secrets, most of the time, are our fire alarm and PA system replacements. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. In North High, we did the HVAC renovations. This is the picture of the new boiler and the new airhouse. We put two new boilers in and two new airhouses in this summer. We also installed a new HVAC system on the pool, which we referred to earlier on our tour, and that's for humidity control. And so, that, it was quite impressive. They scaffleted the pool all the way up to the ceiling to get all the ductwork in there. And it was, it was quite the major project to get that going, because everything's so high above the ceilings there. Food serving is the most visible part of the renovations this summer, and it really gives it a collegiate atmosphere in the area there now. It's, it's, it gives them more space, it's professional, it looks nice. And if talking with Marlene, I think they're going to find it's going to be easier for them to work in that system, and then, than over what they had before, which is very small and cramped. So, definitely the most visible, and then it really does look nice. Turned out really good. We also renovated the nurses' area, so that was a complete renovation, as well as when we did the, when we did the serving area, that's where the principal used to sit, so we had to put in new offices across the way for her and John Matheny in Congress Room. We also did middle school renovations. So, last year, we did Central Middle. We finished, that was the first one out of the box. This year, we wrapped the other four up. This is a picture over at South Middle, and it's just really an improved learning space. You've got more storage, it's a flexible space with the furniture, it has wheels, they can move those around how they want to, how they want to work that. So, we've now got all five middle school science renovations complete. We did the high schools a couple of bond issues ago, so it's all wrapped up on the science side now. We also did some HVAC replacements. This picture is the new unit over at South Middle. They didn't have air conditioning in their gym before, in their large gym, now they do. We also did air conditioning replacements at Mason, West Middle. We did an air handler change out at Early Childhood. So, not one of our bigger years on HVAC, but a lot of units across the district. Most people don't even know we're doing public address upgrades, and we're about 50%, 50% complete with this project. The neat thing about what we're doing here is that in the old days, if you had the old system, if you wanted your bell schedule changed, we had to send an electrician down with a laptop and then go in and program your system. The new system, that can all be done at the school by the principal, assistant principal, or if the secretary's trained, and they're comfortable with them working on a bell schedule, they can do it. It also gives them a lot more flexibility, they can personalize messages. I think it's easier to get out the security messages, there's a cadre of different little things that they can choose there for their security. Overall, it's just a much user-friendly system for our schools, and it's also a digital system replacing an analog system. So, we're moving the old systems, the old rolling systems that we had, were literally, we hardly keep, we couldn't get parts for them anymore. So, definitely an improvement for all of our schools. And then, fire alarm upgrades, we're also about 50%, 50% complete with our fire alarm upgrades. The neat thing about these systems is that they can actually tell us when they need to be cleaned. So, it's a, it's technology. It's a step above where we were. Our old systems were getting old, a lot of false alarms. The new systems are going to be a great improvement over what we have today. And with that, I'm going to turn the, Mike over to Eric.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, so, again, we've, a lot of projects have been done, some of the projects that Mike described, we made sure that have a sustainability focus. Example, carpet we're installing, we're making sure that has low to no VOCs associated with it, which is, contributes to better indoor air quality when we have low NO VOCs. So, but these projects in particular are a little bit more focused specifically to making sure that we are being more conscientious with our resource use. So, with this, over at South High, we are in the process of upgrading the chiller. So, one chiller has been installed, the other is going to be installed very soon. And this is, this project itself is able to replace some aging equipment that was pretty much functionally obsolete. So, the benefits here is the replacement of these chillers provides in a new degree of energy efficiencies to the building, is expecting to save about $40,000 a year just on cooling. On top of that, with the various additional projects, subprojects, if you will, over at South High, such as sealing the envelope with the building, as well as increasing the lighting efficiency with LED technology, we are able to save an additional about $36,000 a year anticipated with energy efficiency. In this project, all of this is being what is hopefully just the first phase of what will lead into pending bond issue approval in November, a geothermal tie-in to that, which will save even more energy. Parkway lighting upgrades. So, while we did a segment of South High School's lights to upgrade to LED, these schools have now all been completed. River Bend, Claymont, Renhallow, replacing old fluorescent lighting with new LED. This is, light bulbs aren't that exciting, but the amount of energy we're able to save by doing this type of work is incredible. The advancement technology that has gone from an old, what's called an old T-12 fluorescent light bulb, was 40 watts. LED light bulbs now, to do, punch out the same amount of light, is at 12 and 1/2 watts. So, that's a massive reduction. With all these lighting projects combined, these three, we're anticipating to save about $34,000 or so. On top of that, Ameren UE, or excuse me, Ameren Missouri, is incentivizing the replacement of those light bulbs. So, they are actually covering the entire cost of the light bulb. Once we fill out and sign the application, get it back, for these projects alone, we're expected to get about $50,000 back, covering all the material costs associated with it. So, that's pretty good. I like 100%, 100% ROI. Now, their incentives change over time and aren't expected to be as good, but, again, we're expected to save a whole lot of money on electricity, which is terrific. So, and with that, lighting takes a big component of our energy load, that's about anywhere between 25% to 33% of our load, HVAC taking about 50%. So, anytime we can save energy on HVAC, the better. We've got some aging infrastructure, HVAC controls, in essence, that make very elaborate thermostats for these large commercial educational buildings that needed to be replaced. And so, we were able to utilize Ameren rebate funding to incentivize getting $418,000 back from Ameren for work that is upgrading various buildings within the district, from old, less dynamic HVAC control systems to newer, which will not be functionally advanced and able to be a greater degree of control. So, all this, these projects in total are expecting about save over $110,000 a year in energy, provided that all things are equal, remain over year over year, and have, with the incentive rebates of about $470,000, the greenhouse gas equivalent reduction of that is taking about 92 average US-sized homes off the electric grid. So, all very important things, and all things that show that we're staying on the bleeding edge and able to try to do as much as we possibly can with the resources that we have.
And we'll wrap up with some small bond and facilities projects that we also accomplished over the summer. Carbon Trails, we did exterior doors and storefronts there, so it wasn't a big project, but it's definitely going to help on energy. South High, we put in a new ADA ramp down in the cafeteria area. We got a little of the two lifts that we took to get down there, and then, now we now have a long ramp there. So, I think that's just better for our students and staff, and it was a nice addition to that, to the cafeteria there. South High Tennis Court, we refinished the playing service, so we're trying to refinish our tennis courts every five years, keep the playing services in good shape. And South's was the last one in the five-year, out of the four high schools in the five-year cycle. So, we'll probably sit for a year or two, and then we'll start the five-year cycle back around. Restroom renovations were completed at Highcroft Ridge in Hannah. So, we renovated, and this was done within-house, carpenters, plumbers, and electricians. We did eight restrooms in Highcroft and four restrooms at Hannah Woods, and they really turned out nice. I know that Carlita's just gawked out over them. So, Northeast Middle, we showed you the fax renovation that we did there, that was also done in-house with our carpenters and plumbers. And then, we're working on a claymont, a new outdoor play area off behind, in the backside, back on the back parking playgrounds, it's off to the right, so we had to put in some retaining walls, leveling, put in some new swing sets, and finishing that up with some saw. And with that, I would open the floor up for questions for Eric or myself.
Thank you also, Wes.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, 14.0 work session, we have none. 15.0 special meeting, we have none. 16.0, our next scheduled closed session will be held Wednesday, September 26th, at 6:00 PM at Parkway Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. Now, we will adjourn to close, so may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
Summit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you all very much. See you in a couple of weeks.